A few minutes late, but thank you for allowing us to get ourselves together here. Okay. I would like to ask for a motion to reopen the meeting. Motion by Commissioner Berkeley, second. Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor? Lynn, Bondima, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks, and Berkeley. And?
Can't read.
I think you're over here, Commissioner Reed. But I know you're in favor of us reopening the meeting, too. Okay. Bye. That's eight and one absent. Did I get it? Okay, good. So at this time, I'm going to ask if we could please stand for the presentation of colors We want to thank and recognize the students from the JROTC at Carver Votech High School. We had Cadet Commander Sergeant Major Sean Curtis, Cadet First Sergeant Tayshana Barnes, Cadet Master Sergeant Tiana Thomas, Cadet Sergeant First Class Reynarda Davis, and Cadet Corporal Taylor Frederick. Let's thank them one more time. Although we do not have an official listing of any of our Baltimore City Public School family in terms of a moment of silence, I would ask that we just take a moment to remember all those folks who have been impacted by the hurricane in the Bahamas as well as in parts of the United States. So if you would join me for just a moment of silence. Now would entertain a motion to approve the prior open session minutes. Moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor? Commissioner Lynn, Bondima, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks, Berkeley, and Reed. That's seven, eight. Thank you, one absent. Did I get them all? I'm sorry, there are two absent. You're right. Sorry about that, yes. Okay. And also would entertain a motion to approve the closed session summaries. It's Commissioner Reed. Is there a second? Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, please. Commissioner Bondima, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks, Berkeley, Reed. I'm not counting well. That is seven, two absent. All right. I would just, in terms of comments from the board chair, just to inform folks, I know at the end of our last board meeting, or during our last board meeting, we had a lot of conversation around the second reader for one of the policies GCO. That did go to a third reader that will come back to the board on September the 24th. So if folks are interested in that, we are continuing to take comments. So if you have those, please, you may send those in. And at this time, I would like to recognize and to invite the Teachers Democracy Project to come. Our former board chair, Cheryl Krishani, had asked them to come and do a presentation. This is one of the partners that works within our system with students, and so, welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to present the findings from an organizing and research project that the Teachers Democracy Project conducted in the summer of 2018. We work with 25 parents and teachers who in turn talked to 659 people about what they most care about around schools. Our team took notes on all of these conversations, and we've analyzed the findings that we wanted to share here. It's important to note that in our interviews with parents and community that our data is skewed towards parent and community, that over 50% of the people that we interviewed were parents and community members. Our findings generally fell into seven buckets. While none of these areas of concern are any surprise, we do find it interesting that at least five of these relate to the quality of relationships in schools. We think this is important because lots of things cost lots of money, but relationships, shifts in relationships often require a difference in focus. We do have a longer presentation which we'll make on September 23rd at the Teachers Democracy Project about each of these seven buckets and the specific findings, but tonight, we're going to just lift up a couple of the key insights that we gleaned from this work. The overarching finding is that parents and teachers agree on the big problems they see, but they describe the problems very differently, and they often place blame either explicitly or implicitly on the other. The first place of disagreement is that stakeholders all agree that engagement of parents in schools is essential, but parents don't feel comfortable engaging. For schools, engagement means parents being responsive and preparing their kids for school, while parents want to engage and want to know what's happening in school but feel unwelcome, judged, or alienated. This is, I'm going to breeze through this a little bit, but this gives you a sense of why parents feel alienated. The second issue is that there are different perspectives that parents and teachers have about managing student struggles. So in the classroom, parents feel that teachers are unable to connect with struggling students. Teachers don't feel they have the time or resources to deal with what children are going through. They both agree that struggling student needs are going largely unmet, but the onus on teachers, but parents put the onus on teachers to connect better, while teachers feel that more outside supports are needed. The third issue is that school safety problems are perceived differently. Parents expect schools to keep their children safe, no matter the source of danger. Teachers, on the other hand, see the source of violence as beginning in the community, and they feel it's a lot to expect schools to provide adequate protection. Parents, again, put the onus on school staff, while teachers express their concerns in a way that places implicit blame or onus on families and community. The fourth issue is different perspectives on race and cultural competence. Parents see teachers as not caring enough. They want more black teachers and teachers who understand their children. Teachers, in turn, express deep care for students, though many come to recognize that they do need some more support to understand where their students come from. The fact that parents perceive a lack of care and teachers express deep care is a big difference that underscores a lack of listening and connection between the two groups. The final issue is that differences in the way family and community challenges are under, that there are differences in the way that family and community challenges are understood. Teachers often express their understanding of student challenges through a trauma lens, while parents don't call what they go through "trauma," they would call it "stress," and really focus on just wanting their lives to feel understood. The lens "trauma" again puts the onus on the individual child or family to heal, while parents are not brought into this framework at all. We don't train them. Neither perspective that they hold really addresses the need to shift the underlying systems that create the trauma to begin with. The differences in perspective found in this data show that there are striking lack, there's a striking lack of relationships between the two groups. And while each group sees the same problems, they're ascribing different causes and solutions to those problems as a result of not being on the same page. This is problematic because teachers and parents are both essential to schools, and in many situations especially related to school safety, it requires collaboration and being on the same page. So our conclusion, actually, I think I did that already, our recommendations as a result of this work is that we need to do more to support teachers in having proactive one-on-one conversations with parents. We need to foster authentic and significant ways for parents to be involved in schools, school-family councils, the community-school strategy. We also need to offer training to parents in things like de-escalation, restorative practices, trauma-informed care. It would also be valuable to create cross-takeholder climate teams to collaboratively identify the safety challenges in school and to come up with restorative strategies together. This is something that Teachers Democracy Project has already been piloting, and we're seeing some nice success. Also, providing opportunities for teachers and parents to hear each other's stories through dialogue circles, more robust training in culturally responsive pedagogy and understanding of race history. And then the last suggestion is convening neighborhood groups and citywide task forces that include various stakeholder groups to explore the root causes of these larger safety issues that impact schools so that people can strategize together and not in silos. That was a very quick overview. There's a lot more to dig into, but I'm trying to keep in five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the, from board members? Commissioner Reed?
I mean, I looked at the whole report, and I guess the thing that sticks with me most is the whole idea of people not listening to each other.
Yeah.
Sure, you're going to have a lot of meetings, but how do you attack the thing that everybody's so polarized now and everybody's so tribal? How do you get people just to listen? I mean, you have ideas, you have programs, but how do you get people just to listen to each other?
I think when you look at the barriers that parents feel to engaging in school, one of the big things is finding the space to interact. So meeting times for one are hard to come by. Like, when do you find a time for teachers and parents to actually connect? Having meetings that accommodate parents' schedules and needs, so if they have to bring their kids, like, dinner needs to be provided because when are you else going to find time to feed children? Childcare should be provided. Like, there's some things that could be done to make parents feel more welcome. And then I think there's an art to facilitating a conversation, and restorative practices gives us lots of examples for how to create spaces for listening, community-building circles, and we already have these tools that we're embedding in schools, but we haven't yet extended those tools to the way that we engage with parents. And I understand all the reasons for that. I know that with stretched resources, it is hard to prioritize parents, but we already have a model.
I think it's interesting that as a part of our executive session, we were just listening and hearing an update on the Office of Communication, Engagement, and Enrollment. And many of the things, the findings that you have and recommendations really do seem to dovetail with the goals and some of the actions and work that that office is going to be doing. So I'm looking forward to some dialogue that you'll have with them. I'm sure you've probably already been talking to some of those folks, but...
We've been trying.
Yes, I think these are some important areas, and telling the story really is one highlight that I think we all need to do a better job of, and in helping parents as well as staff and students to do that better, and the engagement piece. So, thank you. Thanks for sharing with us, and we will look forward to hearing what type of action and how we have improved in this area as we move forward. I have the pleasure this evening of announcing and recognizing the results of elections that took place with the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, ASCBC. This was election for the executive board. And so, just as background for you, the candidates did have to do applications that have references from their students, from their teachers and administrators. They actually participated in giving a speech and a question-and-answer session. The elections took place, was it this year? Beginning of this year? Okay. Thirty students from middle and high schools responded and took place in this election, and these are the results of what happened there. And if those students who are present, I know we have maybe, maybe three? Okay, who are present with us, and if you are, please, as when I call your name, please come forward so that we can recognize you and make certain that we get a picture history of tonight. First is our own Joshua Lynn, who was re-elected as student commissioner. He's returning. He's a student at Baltimore City College. Stand up, yeah. Crystal Tillery, I'm sorry, Kache Curtis. Curtis was elected president and is also a student at Baltimore City College. Crystal Tillery was elected vice president, a student at Vivian T. Thomas. Angel Hargrove was elected secretary and also a student at Vivian T. Thomas. Yacine Toure, treasurer from Vivian T. Thomas. Kyrie Sykes, chief of staff from Paul Lawrence Dunbar. Okay, I thought, okay. And Destiny Sykes, middle school executive from Hazelwood Elementary Middle School. Congratulations to you all. Let's see, Kache, president? Would you like to say anything as the newly-elected president?
Yes.
Oh, oh. Geez. Oh. God, to the recognition. That's okay.
I kind of just wrote down my notes. Like they said, my name is Kache Curtis. I go to Baltimore City College. I'm a senior. I'm the president for ASCBC this year. So a few things that, like they said, we have students now that came from City, Vivian T., Dunbar C., and Hazelwood. Some positions that we're still looking to be filled are fundraising coordinator, our historian, and our middle school liaison. Our upcoming event is our general assembly we have planned for November 6th. It is at City, of course. It is from 4:00 to 6:00. If anyone is interested, we need a few speakers here and there, just in case. This year, we'll be looking into community outreach, connecting with some city officials to create a program that helps students get involved with helping our peers with homelessness, which could also include us looking into volunteering at soup kitchens and doing food and/or clothing drives. Last year, our main goal was to focus on creating a platform, gaining more students, more schools to be involved. We doubled our numbers to 26 schools last year. So our goal this year is to use those schools and to create a larger, a wider spread idea of leadership throughout schools and to get them more involved in student activism.
Great. Thank you. I know we want to take a picture, right?
I need to answer a question. Sorry, if you want to donate food and clothes, where do you deliver those items to?
So, we're still working on trying to create, we just had our first meeting last Tuesday, so we're still working on trying to get those details together for the year, more school, trying to get our schools interested. Every year, they have to reapply. So, we're still working on that and trying to get more involved with the Maryland Food Bank and other organizations to help us get those things done.
And when you decide and come to the conclusion where you want those delivered, could you pick a spot where we, people can, can make it easy for them to drive up and drop a lot of stuff off so they won't have to, you know, park and carry?
Yes, ma'am.
The young ones like me?
Yes.
Because I'm thinking of, I have a lot of friends, family, and associates who are talking about fall cleaning and books and all kinds of foods, items, and so, right now. So as soon as you do that, I think you get a place you can call and leave that information, and I'm sure, because I got about five bags right now, so that's one.
All right. We'll give you Commissioner Bondima's number. Personally, she'll take care of the drive for you. Let's get a picture, though.
All right.
Joshua, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't give you a chance to say anything, but I knew you usually speak.
No, no, no. She said everything.
That's right, okay. Okay. I think at this time, am I ready to turn it over? I'm trying to follow my order here.
No donations.
Right. We have no donations to report. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I need to now look at the personnel and quasi-judicial matters, and so I will, is there a motion to accept those items? Commissioner Richardson, second, about Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor? Commissioner Bondima, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks, Berkeley, Reed. Seven, two absent. Now I can turn it over to the CEO.
Thank you, Chair Kachin, Kachinia. Did I say that? Oh, Lord, Chinia, oh, gosh. I know, I know. But the revolution is not here. So, I'm going to ask Chief Grant Skinner to join us, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Dr. Santalises. As I call appointees' names, if you are here, please stand so we can recognize you. First, Jeffrey Mill, educational specialist II, is appointed coordinator for health and physical education effective September 11th. Kamise Love, assistant principal in Wacomaco Public Schools, is appointed educational specialist II for SST effective September 16th. Megan Holly, educational associate at Augusta-Fell Savage Institute of Visual Arts, is appointed educational specialist II mathematics effective September 11th. Susanna West, founder of the School Counseling Advisory Board in Rochester City School District, is appointed educational specialist II school counseling effective September 30th. Kimberly Hoffman, director of data monitoring and compliance, is assigned, reassigned executive director of data monitoring and compliance effective September 11th. And Douglas Fireside, currently Senior Technical Consultant with American Institutes for Research, is appointed interim principal effective September 11th through June 30th at New Song Academy.
I would also like to add that, oh, and thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. I would also like to add that interim principal Fireside is actually returning to City schools. He spent 20 years working here as a teacher and teacher leader. He received his undergraduate degree from the University of North Carolina-Greensboro and his master's degree from Johns Hopkins. He has two children in Baltimore City schools and has lived in the city for more than 25 years. Welcome back, and we wish you the best. So, welcome back, and as we had a wonderful start to the school year, I want to say thank you, really to everyone. We had both, we had staff from across the district, whether it was principals, teachers, custodians, operations staff, school staff, teaching and learning, board members who went out to visit schools, and most importantly, families and students who actually arrived and arrived ready to learn. So I want to thank everybody for a wonderful school opening this year. As we start the school year, I also want to commend our communications, engagement, and enrollment division who did a lot of work on a new video we had hoped to be able to show it to you tonight. We're not, but I want to make sure that everyone in the public knows to go to our website, and we have a video produced by our student communications team who continues to churn out, I think, some of the best young professionals in, burgeoning professionals in communications anywhere in the state. But we invite you to go to our website and actually get a chance to view that video. Moving on, I think it's also important to know the role that the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation has had in the lives of many Baltimore City young people. They have brought their message of transforming communities to change young people's lives to kids nationwide, and Baltimore really is no exception. Tonight, I am very pleased to welcome Steve Salem, president and CEO, along with executive vice president, Carrie, is it Lebo? Lebo. Carrie Lebo, to tell us more about the great work of the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, both nationally and locally. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's a real pleasure to be here, and we thank you for the invitation. We love partnering with the Baltimore school system because Baltimore's our home. We work across the country. In 2019, we will impact almost 2 million kids across the country. We're starting to make some, get some good traction in Baltimore City. Honestly, it's taken some time for a variety of issues, which you all are well aware of, but we're starting to see some good impacts in Baltimore, and that means a lot to us. I'll be very brief, but in addition to some of the fields that we've built in the city, which I'll share with you, we have some wonderful programs, and these programs are transformational for these kids. Primarily, we serve at-risk communities. We're looking for the toughest, most at-risk kids we can get our arms around because that's where the real need is. And so our programs include one called Badges for Baseball, which is our signature program. We use police officers as coaches and mentors. We bring them into the inner-city communities, where they already are, of course. We give them a little bit of training in baseball skills. We give the kids or the local youth organizations... We give the kids or the local youth organization that we partner with all the equipment they're going to need to run the program. And then the police officers become the coach. And, you know, I don't need to tell you all how important that is in a city like Baltimore. But, you know, I think about Ferguson because that's where the rioting, at least, at least on a national scale and in the public eye started. If Michael Smith, if we had had the Badges for Baseball program there, and we do not, had Officer Wilson been a coach in the Badges for Baseball program and had Michael Smith been a kid in the program, when he asked him to get out of the street, instead of the violence that erupted, he would have said, "I'm sorry, Coach, I'll see you tomorrow." And we never heard of Michael Smith or Officer Wilson or even Ferguson. And that's what this program is doing. And it is truly transformational. Not only does the program run in those local communities, but we have a summer camp and we bring the police officers and the kids in from across the country. And they spend a week together on the Chesapeake Bay and it's really a wonderful thing. So, you know, and we have a series of other programs, whether it's nutrition or fitness or anti-bullying or civics and leadership. We're trying to provide lessons for these kids that they don't get. And as we started bringing these programs across the country and in Baltimore City, what we realized quickly was that there's no place for these kids to play safely. And we're really good at using Cal, who is passionately committed to these young people, as is his brother Bill. We're very good at filling gaps and services to kids because we can bring excitement to a community when we bring Cal in. And so, a woman named Doris Buffett, you're all familiar with her brother Warren Buffett, called us one day. She lives in Fredericksburg. And she said, "I have an idea. And my brother said, 'You're right here in my backyard and I want to talk to you.'" So we went down. And she said, "I want to build fields for kids that nobody cares about." Lot of racism in Fredericksburg. You know, there's the old south side of town and the minority side of town. And they don't necessarily see it that way, but that's how we saw it. And the racism was open. And Doris wanted to help those kids and the city didn't really want to work with her. And so she said, "I'll give you $1 million if you raise $1 million. I'm not giving the money to the city and I'll only do it if you build the field, not the city." We didn't know how to build a field, but we figured it out. It took us five years, but we figured it out and we built a beautiful park in the middle of Fredericksburg, which is spectacular. And slowly but surely, we started receiving requests. And today, we're at 88 fields. These cost about, the price goes up every six months to a year, but we've built 88 fields across the country. By the end of the year, we'll be close to 100 and then we're going to go to 200. In Baltimore City, we have 15 fields. I'm sorry, in the state of Maryland, we have 15 fields. 12 are in Baltimore City. Our goal is to put parks in, we want the entire city to be green and lush and beautiful and have these kids playing in a safe environment. That's what these fields are for. We're not looking to build baseball players or athletes. We're trying to keep these kids alive and so they can become productive, healthy adults and help the next generation that comes in behind them. And these fields do it. And, and, you know, we sort of stumbled into this, but what has happened now is the Badges for Baseball program runs on all of our fields. So now you have those same kids and the police officers in these same communities, instead of killing each other, they're running and having fun and staying healthy. And the police get more out of it than the kids. And we had no idea that would happen, but it's absolutely the truth. You can see on the screen, recently, we built Eddie Murray Field. Of course, you all know Eddie Murray, the great Oriole first baseman, at James Moser Elementary School in West Baltimore. When the riots started or concluded, we made a decision internally that we wanted to build at least initially five fields in West Baltimore. We knew it wouldn't be easy. Raising the money is extraordinarily difficult. I think I said this, they cost a million to a million and a half a field. But it's important. And the fact that it's really hard to raise the money to build these fields is exactly why we have to build these fields. And so, we started with James Moser Elementary School. And we work with the James Moser, I'm sorry, is it, is it James Moser Elementary? And the James Moser Little League, which is, if you're not all familiar with the Moser Little League, you need to be. It is a group of gentlemen and ladies who run the longest consecutive-running minority Little League program in America. And it happens to be in West Baltimore. And these are real heroes. These are real heroes. And they're keeping these kids alive and the things that are happening at Moser Elementary School, which is a wonderful place in and of itself. It's amazing. On September 17th, the picture you see here is Brooks Robinson Field. We'll cut the ribbon on September 17th at Frederick Douglass High School. We didn't pick that by accident. That's ground zero for the rioting. The need is unbelievable and these kids deserve it. And it is maybe the most beautiful field that I've ever seen. So, if you haven't seen it, please drive by. Please come to the ribbon cutting on the 17th. It's going to be a big, extraordinary celebration and we're very excited about that. I should have said when I started, I want to thank Allison Perkins Cohen and Blaine Lipsky, who I know is here also, who we work with and we appreciate their support very much. A lot of what we do, cutting through bureaucracy is difficult, if not impossible, and we're able to do it because of their help. So I want to acknowledge them for the record. And one of the other things we're doing now that we also stumbled on is STEM. Huge need. Couple of years ago, we took it on as a challenge and we put a couple of STEM centers in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and Fredericksburg, Virginia. Today, we have 56 STEM centers. We just put a STEM center in every elementary school in Oklahoma City, working with the school board. On August 24th, I think, we cut the ribbon on 33 STEM centers in Oklahoma City. We, from soup to nuts, which is why they work with us, we install these STEM centers at a cost of about $25,000 to $30,000 per school. So we use our purchasing power and the excitement we can generate to get vendors on board with us and they provide the training. And when we leave, these kids have everything they need. These are state-of-the-art STEM centers. And so, there's many areas that we can help these kids in Baltimore City, working with the school system. It's what we would like to do. If you have any questions, Carrie and I would be very happy to answer them. I should have acknowledged Carrie Lebo when we sat down for everything she does. And I thank you again for inviting us. And, you know, the kids in Baltimore are why we're here. We don't do this for the adults. We're doing it for the kids. They deserve it and we're here to help them. Thank you very much.
Great, well, I want to thank you all for the work. I was just doing my teacher pause to see if there were any questions or comments from the, from the board. But I just want to thank you all for the work that you are doing on behalf of our young people. A million dollars plus per field is not chump change. And so, the fact that you all have committed that amount of resources and that amount of lift for something that people might see as, you know, secondary, actually is very critical to the lives of our young people. So we thank you for your investment and your partnership.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Throughout the 2018-19 school year, the Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Working Group that included amongst others our BTU President Diamond T. Brown and Chief Human Capital Officer Jeremy Grant Skinner. The group collaborated to develop new ideas for recruiting and retaining more black teachers. At monthly public meetings, this group heard, shared and developed 12 recommendations based on the voices of more than 250 stakeholders, which we will work to fully implement in the months ahead to ensure that city schools will have a teaching population that more fully reflects the students that we serve. I am very grateful to everyone who participated in the working group. I am, I have stated over and over again that the quality of the research, the quality of the recommendations was stellar. We're looking forward to making sure that we implement and move forward with those recommendations. And I am extremely pleased to report that we opened this new school year with the best back-to-back years of teacher retention in nearly two decades. In addition, this year, a majority of our new teacher hires are black for the first time since 2004, including 100 black men. And more of our teachers are black today than any time in the last 11 years. So I want, I want to thank the, again, the working group. When I re-entered city schools, we had had a downward trend in both retention and recruitment of black teachers because of the attention of many partners and individuals represented in that group. We can see that we actually have some traction and we're moving in a far more positive direction. So I want to thank everyone for the work there. Please.
I've, thank you, Dr. Santalises. I've had questions from different people in the public, from African-American males who want to change their career and who've been successful in their professional career, who are interested in going into teaching as a second career. Do we have that online first step? I guess, the first step that they should take in order to move in that direction? Do we have that online?
So I will defer that to Chief Grant Skinner for that question as he comes. One of the things I will say, Commissioner Bondima, is that when I listened to some of the feedback from the work group, what we did hear was a need for greater support through the process for folks who are not coming through programs that already provide that support. And so, I do think, you know, to your question, there's, there's that kind of initial direction, but also what, at least what I heard from the group was we have to do a better job of supporting people throughout the process. But Chief Grant Skinner, did I give you enough time to get to the?
Sure, thank you. I would add, Commissioner Bondima, that in the spring, we held a couple of events that were, that were open publicly to anyone who was interested in learning about how they can become a teacher, even though they're not already in a teacher training program, which I think includes individuals like you are talking about. And we can, we can post on our website more information about when we schedule more of those. These, we targeted these to people who are within city schools and roles like parent educators and substitute teachers, as well as sharing the message more widely with the public so that we can capture individuals who could be on a path toward becoming a teacher, even though they're not yet, yet ready today.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. I also want to just remind, the public remind, particularly our families, that as we experience hot days, please go to our website, just as a reminder and a refresher, for which schools will close in the event that the temperature target that we have established, that we began last year and that we've been holding to, is reached in buildings. I want to say that we were very fortunate that as we make progress on our air conditioning plan, we added an additional five schools with VP units this year that actually will provide both air conditioning and heat in schools. I got to talk to some high school students to kind of get their feelings about now having some of those units in the climate control and they're very enthusiastic about that. I will also just remind the public that we are working with an approved plan by the state to implement air conditioning and climate controls in a way that is consistent with the current funding level. We have, our operations team has done a wonderful job in keeping current AC, even that that goes offline, back online. But again, as a reminder to the public, we have an approved AC plan. We partnered with industry leaders who have also said that given the low levels of current funding we have, our plan makes sense. Our plan is prudent. And no, it is not fast enough. And we would, if I could, wave a wand and have it there tomorrow. But given what we have, the resources we have and the, and the state of our buildings, as old as they are, right? I will just say, watch the real narrative. It is convenient to drop excuses and knee-jerk, right, accusations of mismanagement. It's politically expedient and it requires very little study to do so. But in the words of a movie that my family enjoys, The Wizard of Oz, don't pay attention to the little man in the corner, right? Oz wants us to keep focused on the booming message when really it's the little man in the corner and in this case, systemic decades of underfunding that is the real issue. But if we only focus on the booming voices who pick out convenient messages, we will lose track of the fact that it is the resourcing of our schools that is actually going to get the oldest buildings in the state to the place that our young people deserve. So I just want to provide that little bit of encouragement to keep focused on the real issue. And the real issue is the little man in the corner. It's not the booming voice. It is systemic underfunding. I will end on this note. As we begin the school year, I am very excited and want to encourage everyone to participate in our back-to-school night at their children's school. But I also want to invite everyone to our second annual district-wide back-to-school celebration next Monday, September 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Maryland Science Center. We had about, probably over 2,000 families last year who came out from all corners of the city. We had a fabulous time at the Maryland Science Center. I can't think of a better way to celebrate back-to-school. I had trouble getting my own children separated from the events that were happening. So I want to encourage families, please come out. Many of our schools provide transportation. We invest in transportation for this night because we want as many families as possible to participate. I will be there. Many of our cabinet members and board members will be there. So please come out, celebrate with us the launching of school and have a fantastic school year.
Thank you. I hope you all put that on your calendars. September 16th, Science Center. We have an information and discussion item on policy DBCA, Long Range Financial Planning. This is a first reader.
Good evening, John Walker, interim CFO.
Good evening. Courtney Desabay, Special Assistant to the CFO. So, the policy tonight, Long Range Financial Planning. This is a first reader. We took in some of the feedback that we received at Policy Committee when this was presented and incorporated into the policy. And I'll just read through some of the updates. So the policy is being put in place to outline development of a long-term financial forecasting and reporting process for city schools. It's a commitment to our long-range planning and to provide insight into the school district's future financial capacity. Part of the challenge is that there's no current specific policy regarding long-range financial planning, but that's not to suggest that we don't engage in long-range financial planning currently. So this is just more of a level of commitment going forward on the regularity, the content of the financial planning. Planned stakeholder engagement for the development of actual financial plan will be PCAP Cabinet and at the board's suggestion from Policy Committee to engage with some of our community partners who do conduct financial operations in the private sector may have some input as to how we can incorporate some of that information into our own public financial planning as well. The summary of the policy. The CEO designees shall conduct long-range financial planning analysis of projected revenue expenses for city schools. It extends at least five years. We had some discussion in terms of the period. We know the volatility of our funding climate sometimes and how, you know, frequently things can change. We did think it prudent to, to do a five-year projection that would be updated on an annual basis. So what that means is essentially the projection would be redone on a yearly basis, but still do an outlook for a five-year period. And this would include our revenue forecasts. So revenue from our various sources, state, local, federal and other sources. local, federal, and other sources, as well as expense forecasts for both schools and central office. And this does not exclude any other ad hoc requests or projections that come from the Board or Cabinet. The frequency, as I mentioned, would be annual. Part of the feedback we received from Policy Committee was in terms of the timing, when would be the best time of year, when would this information be most useful? And in that regard, we decided that the policy would be presented to the Board before August 31st each year, so it would be presented at the start of the fiscal year. Also, that would lend towards the budget development process and some of the decision-making processes that take place during the course of the fiscal year. The content would be an analysis that includes information on the financial environment, revenue expenditure, as I mentioned, fund balance positions, and also included in their monitoring mechanisms for how are you going to track and monitor financial processes during the course of the year as well. We're also going to report on, and this is also part of feedback, the parties that are engaged in the development of the actual funding projecting, sorry, plan. As I mentioned, the timeline would be to present to the Board annually prior to August 31st each year. All right? Any questions?
Commissioner Reed, did you have questions?
I guess you're coming back with another reader, I guess, in the future.
Yes.
When you come back with the other reader, is there a way, somewhere you can have projections or pro forma numbers in terms of expectations, in terms of how this would look? Because you talk about the forecast in terms of revenue, expenses, over a five-year period, but is there some way in terms of numbers that people can look at and say, hey, this is what we expect to see the next time?
Just like an example of a pro forma statement?
Yeah, right, right. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions?
No other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to do a review for the consent agenda. Just a reminder, at this time, we're not taking a vote. I'm just going to review those items before we have public comment, in case there may be some changes based on comment. So the items for the consent agenda are 8.01 waiver requests for policy FKA, and 8.02, I believe we do need to pull, which is also policy BGB, which is another waiver request. There are no procurement items for this evening, so I believe I have covered what is in that area. Okay. So after public comment, then we will come back to vote on those two items. Okay. So we will now be moving into our public comment, and we begin with the special groups, recognized groups. And our first group listed is the Baltimore Teacher Union. Zach Taylor here to represent.
Thank you.
I just want to start by welcoming this opportunity to speak before the Board without the pressure of a looming unannounced form observation vote, and hopefully, we can have some conversation, maybe some questions. Some of this, hopefully, will be new information. The BTU emphasizes that teachers embrace observation feedback to improve instruction and student achievement, but we really have no reason to think that the current district proposal meets these needs. Indeed, we have many reasons to believe that it will be counterproductive to improving instruction. One major reason unannounced formal observations have caused so much anxiety in teachers is because of the observation tool the district uses, the instructional framework. The instructional framework was developed in part by a group of Baltimore City teachers who were told that its intended use was to guide improvement through informal observations over a period of time. It was an instructional coaching device initially. Its initial purpose was not tied to formal evaluations or observations. That came later and was a decision made by the district. Most Maryland LEAs use the Danielson Framework, or like us, a modified Danielson Framework, which our rubric is based on, but the similarities stop there. When you compare our instructional framework to the observation tools other districts use, ours dwarfs them in both size and complexity. The word count on our instructional framework is nearly 4,000 words, whereas the second-highest word count for an observation tool in the state of Maryland is 2,500 words. The problem with this is that the instructional framework and the Danielson rubric in general weren't developed to be measurements of single classroom visits, and there's no research anywhere that using them in this manner is effective. Charlotte Danielson herself believes this is a misuse of the framework she developed. These rubrics are comprehensive tools meant to gather information and measure a teacher's overall performance over a period of time. Using them on a visit-by-visit basis undermines their intent. When rated on so many different components with numerous distinguishing factors, teachers are overwhelmed. They're demoralized and distracted from the meaningful conversations that can come from collaborative environments built on trust and geared towards instructional growth. I can't emphasize enough, the instructional framework's current misuse will only be exacerbated by a move to unannounced formal observations. It will encourage teachers to leave the most challenging schools, and the district will see even higher rates of talented teachers depart from more supportive environments. And while we are aware that the instructional framework is undergoing a rewrite, how it's used and what it consists of needs to be part of a comprehensive process addressing all aspects of our evaluation system. Again, this is why the BTU requests a work group to meet on these issues throughout this school year. As part of this evaluation work group, the BTU also wants to address another proposed regulation change to GCORA, which hasn't received a lot of conversation. The regulation permits the district to not observe teachers every year based on criteria that may include consistent high levels of performance. KOMAR permits tenured effective teachers to be evaluated on three-year cycles. This allows administrators to spend time where they're most needed, in classrooms with early-career teachers and those who have been rated ineffective. Indeed, every single LEA in Maryland, other than Baltimore City, formally observes effective tenured teachers on a one-year-on, two-year-off evaluation cycle. At present, the proposed regulation doesn't bring teachers any sense of ease because it's not clear who it will affect or how it will work. Now, of course, there are unique aspects of our contract that make such a transition more complex than in other districts, but that's one reason, again, that the union is proposing an evaluation work group for this school year. We want to address this language to make it more in line with what we find in regulations and evaluation guidelines throughout the entire state of Maryland, and we believe we could find a way to make this work through our current contract or possibly an MOU. Lastly, the BTU also wants to address the idea that our teachers are somehow being rated unusually high. It was stated at the last Board meeting that we don't see the distribution of effectiveness in teachers that we see with principal evaluations. But I want to emphasize that ratings for Baltimore City teachers are not out of alignment with what we see for teachers throughout the state of Maryland. According to the most recent data available to us from MSDE, as a percent of the teacher workforce, there are 17 school districts in Maryland that have more teachers who are rated highly effective than Baltimore City does. Likewise, Baltimore City has a higher share of our teachers rated ineffective than 20 out of the other 23 districts in the state. Taken as a whole, Baltimore City's teachers are already being rated less effective than teachers elsewhere in Maryland. This is happening despite the fact, as noted by a Commissioner in the last School Board meeting, that Baltimore City is outperforming the state in a number of areas regarding student growth on the most recent park assessment. I know that my allotted time is about up. There are many other things that we wish that we could share, so I encourage and appreciate any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Commissioner Bondima.
I also, sorry, I forgot to hand out, I do have just our instructional framework. I know you've seen it, but I printed them out. And I also have the data that I referred to regarding teacher evaluations relative to teacher evaluations elsewhere in the state, and I included just what KOMAR permits in terms of an evaluation cycle. So I do have that. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I have a question on the last Board meeting that most of the teachers attend, and I know it was mentioned, but I didn't write it down. They said that they had submitted, it's on, can you hear me? They said that they had submitted a survey, and they showed the percent of teachers who responded to the survey, and could you give it to me again? Because I was not clear on how many surveys they received back. They showed percentages, but if I'm not mistaken, and I probably am, you said only 100 came back?
Oh, I believe that our numbers were between 600 and 700 teachers.
How many teachers do we, how many did you send out?
We sent it to the emails that we have within our membership list, so it was probably around 5,000 teachers.
Okay, and how many came back?
I believe over six. I can look it up. I don't have the exact number. I'm happy to send you that number.
You said 600 and something?
I believe at a minimum. I think it could have been more.
Because the percentage was so high, or such a few compared to the amount of teachers who should have responded. And I'm really curious to see how many teachers responded to the, in the results of their response.
No problem. I was also curious about that last week when we, or at the last meeting, when we heard from the head of the Principals' Union, and they talked about...
I remember the Principals' Union, but I'm thinking about...
Yeah, I wonder how many results they had as well, in terms of the amount of qualified observers who responded.
Because I was not clear, and it sounded like it was compared to the teachers that you have in the system, it was a low amount of response.
I believe we had, for the evaluate, for the surveys that we've sent out in the past, and especially for surveys that I've heard the district have sent out to teachers, it was the highest response rate I've heard of. I believe, we can look it up in terms of the exact numbers, but I don't have that number ahead of me. But again, the response was overwhelming. It was 99%. I believe we had one or two.
But it couldn't have been 99% if out of the, what did you say?
Of those who responded. I mean, we are happy, we have some time before the next fourth third reader. We're happy to send it out again and share that information. It's nothing that we're trying to hide. We do feel like we are absolutely representing not just the majority of our interests, almost everybody's interest in terms of teachers.
So I think what I'm hearing is you're going to send us the actual data around the numbers?
Sure, yeah. We will send you what we already have.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
I just wanted to ask you, you mentioned in your presentation about how we fare against some of the other jurisdictions in the state in terms of the number of teachers rated highly effective. I think it's probably in alignment with Commissioner Bondima's question. I would just be curious if we could do that comparison apples to apples, right? Because we know there are some jurisdictions that have much smaller students than we do, and so therefore, probably not as many teachers. And so I think that kind of plays with percentages when you do that. So I don't need you to look it up now, but it's just, I'd like to know, like, who do we compare with apples to apples, and then what does that look like?
Right. And if you look in the handout that I gave, I think it does have the amount, the number of actual recipients at the bottom of the bar, so you can see like how many teachers. It was in the color-coded bar graphs? Yes, I believe at the bottom you can see. I don't have a copy in front of me. Okay, all right.
Commissioner Berkeley?
I just wanted to thank you for coming and sharing this, and appreciate the input. Thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. Thanks for coming again also. What you, the instructional framework that you printed, this is what is current.
This is what's current. I'll note that in the next iteration of the instructional framework that we've seen drafts of, they reduce the T rows from nine to eight, but the word count actually increases. It goes from around 3,800 to 4,200.
Okay. Thank you for that. And you mentioned Danielson, that framework, not necessarily, you're saying, not the way that it is used for observations, it should be used in a more broader sense. Is there another recommendation for a tool that the BTU would recommend incorporating in to the review process?
I believe, for us, the problem isn't so much that the tool doesn't describe good teaching, it's just the idea that you would see all of these things in one snapshot of a lesson that an administrator or qualified observer witnesses within a half hour. So we think that there's a lot of good things there that actually could lead to really solid instructional coaching. The problem that comes with expecting to meet every single one of those rubric standards within a half hour, or oftentimes, our administrators come in and they come in a little late, they have to leave a little early, we get left with 20 minutes, and the kind of feedback we get is, again, overwhelming when we're hit on these nine T rows.
Well, I think that, I think one of the more important pieces to this conversation is making sure, number one, if the observation is happening, it should really be happening over the course of an entire class period, and then making sure that the observer is versed and skilled in using whatever tool. Because I agree, in a class, you can look at domain one, right, which deals with planning and preparation, domain two, which deals with, I think it is, the classroom environment, and then domain three deals with the instruction. I can see all of those things in a class period. I can see, in that rubric, I should, as an evaluator or observer, be able to see those things. Maybe not so much of the planning and preparation, and I think that that goes into the pre-observation conversation. Domain four, I don't think is something that can really be evaluated during a class period because it deals with professional responsibilities. So I can get that. But I would just be curious to know if there was like another option outside of that. And I know that the instructional framework, as it has been used, is an iteration of the Danielson framework, so I can see that. Those, where are we with the revision or the update to the instructional framework?
So I think, again, that's in progress, but I would invite Chief Grant Skinner, or I don't know if Jess is here. You can certainly report.
And Chief, with the revisions and update, how are we involving and including the teacher voice and the observer voice in that process?
Sure. So in terms of where we are in the process, we spent time over the 2018-2019 school year bringing together some volunteer representatives of different stakeholder groups. Those included some people identified by prior leadership of BTU, included some ILED representation, other district office staff, who informed changes to the instructional framework that have been incorporated so far. So the Board has seen a version of this one with seven teacher indicators instead of nine, which Zach referred to. So we, I think at first reader or second reader, we shared that in corp, based on input from some district office folks as well as BTU, we have decided that the 2019-2020 school year will be a foundational year, where we spend time using the current, the existing instructional framework for evaluations, while spending time essentially practicing the use of the new framework and hearing feedback about what that looks like. I, BTU can certainly speak to this, but they've identified more people to be involved in that process. So Jessica Papia from my team leads those meetings each month, and we look forward over the course of the year to continuing to work together on it.
I appreciate that. I think that the important thing in the process is making sure that teachers understand what the tool is going to be for the observation, and also that administrators and those that are observing are comfortable as possible and well-versed in that tool so that they can be objective when they're looking in a classroom to pull evidence for all of those key areas, so.
I will note, I'm part of those meetings right now going forward, and I've been in several of those meetings. And while we appreciate being included, there's pretty strong limitations on what sort of feedback is being accepted in terms of what we think is appropriate. We, again, voice a lot of these concerns and really specific concerns about the instructional framework, and we are really concerned that it will drive teachers from our most challenging schools. challenging schools because of the way it's implemented, and because of just ongoing research, there's been recent research on the Danielson framework that shows that it's more tied to student characteristics than teacher actions, and we feel like we're kind of doubling down on that.
Okay, and, thank you. I, I think Commissioner Brooks, did you want, are you?
I was just gonna just make also a point, after digging in some of the research myself, again, it's not, what I've been able to find, that there is no sort of a, the framework is not necessarily an indicator of sort of teacher effectiveness in the sense that by doing more unannounced observations, none of that was linked to any of the information that we, that I had found. Also, it, just the point, that it also increases the opportunity for bias to be embedded into the process, and folks were recommending that if you want to have an authentic experience during the research around coaching teachers, you would need anywhere from three to seven observations to even begin to sort of develop recommendations that could actually enhance teacher practice in the classroom. So I just want to put that there.
And, and I would add that I think that's a part of some of the discussion around the, the better use of the framework in terms of, of fully helping, using it as a professional development tool, so that it's not just tied to an ob, a formal observation, but, but just as you said, various times of authentically seeing what's happening and being able to coach and support teachers in their growth.
Right.
I would also add that, that if we are going to look at the research, that we actually look at research in other urban school districts that are actually seeing increases in student achievement, not just philosophical interpretations of a framework, because frankly, having been part of a group that developed the initial framework, that we did actually implement initially, it was always initially, and I know that because I was CAO, and that initially it was, it was a developmental tool, so that everybody was on the same page about what they were looking at, there was great investment in observer capacity. Again, the bias studies I have looked at have actually talked about the fact that it is the alignment with observation, bias is in everything, right? And that, and that's why we have, you know, an equity framework. But, so I just want to encourage us that if we are going to do a deep dive on the research, that we actually look at comparative populations and we look at comparative districts, like I, the, the, the point was, again, as somebody who was here when we were developing it, that it actually is, to your point, the development of people in the tool, the investment in observer training, which if we look over the trajectory over the last decade, has fallen off significantly. There has not been the comparative investment that was made initially, which was, and again, because I oversaw the budget, was significant in the initial training of observers and the initial alignment. And so one of the things that we've been working with, with staff, is to make sure that we are recommitting, to make sure that folks are trained, they are aligned, that investment had fallen off over a number of years, and we're putting that back in. I just want to make sure, because again, some of the research I look at are actually fast improving, urban school districts that are experiencing a trajectory of improvement, not isolated school districts with different populations of kids. I just want us to expand the research, if we're going to cite research, we should expand the research we're analyzing.
Yeah.
And so I think for that, I, I agree, I think we should be looking at that, and I, that's why I really like the idea of engaging teachers and sort of doing a deep dive into this so that we can get something that is actually useful and helpful for our district in actually advancing it and moving it forward.
Yeah, and I just, lastly, want to reiterate, we really do see this as an opportunity. We know that accountability systems are about changing behavior and improving instruction, and we just know that that will cease to be likely if teachers don't themselves believe in the measures that are being used. So we think being part of the process really can help get buy-in and credibility for whatever comes forward, and we, we hope to make strong strides in increasing student achievement and instructional practices. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, as, as I said earlier, we are continuing to listen and to incorporate the things that we've heard, we will come back again with the third reader on September the 24th. We already heard from our Associated Student Congress, so our next group is the Parent Community Advisory Board. Shante Guy along with Joseph Kane and Jessica Fontroy, are they all here with you tonight, or just you? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Sanalisis, Commissioner Chinia, and Board Commissioners. Before I speak on behalf of the Parent and Community Advisory Board, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to speak on behalf of Shante Guy. While I am very grateful with the investment that the Cal Ripken Senior Fund has, has made in West Baltimore, having gone to eleven Baltimore City Public Schools, many of whom were on that list, James Mosher, Matthew Henson, Robert W. Coleman, Tom Stu, the Old School and the New School, back in the eighties, I, I, I want to raise a point, because it struck a chord with me. I repeatedly heard reference to riots, and I want us to just make sure that we differentiate an uprising from a riot. As someone who grew up in West Baltimore City, I believe that what happened there was an uprising. Okay? An uprising, as defined not by me, is a popular revolt that attempts to overthrow a government or its policies. That's what our children did. A riot is unrestrained behavior. Our children felt pressured and in a powder keg, and quite honestly felt like they were subject and that the community was subject to policies that were meant to continue to disinvest in those communities and to continue to racially profile, and I'm, I'm just really passionate about differentiating an upriot from a policy, and that was all me and not P-CAB. So, yep. So with regard to P-CAB, just wanted to provide you guys with a couple of updates. After our comments at the last board meeting about equity in hiring for the Community Schools Coordinator, we were happy to hear from Chief Tina Heitcupert that modifications to the job requirements would be made that would result in selecting traditionally excluded candidates instead of selecting them out, so thank you for your responsiveness there. Also, with regards to Regulation G-C-O-R-D, we were thankful to hear that the district is taking the time to work on the instructional framework and equally importantly, engaging in conversations to trust build. P-CAB is looking forward to being included in those continued stakeholder conversations. Also, since we met, P-CAB members had the opportunity to participate in a collaborative community design session on Kerwin. That design session included P-CAB, the BTU, PTA, ACLU, Teachers Democracy Project, and so we are looking forward to being able to engage parents in a really robust way that provides them with the education that they need around why this funding is important and to help them also to become advocates on behalf of our children. P-CAB took the opportunity to meet with Commissioners Chinia and Richardson, thank you so much for your time yesterday and for your insights around the board's strategic goals and providing your feedback around ours, which I'll be sharing with the board in a minute. We had our retreat with our full P-CAB membership and shared what the executive committee's strategic goals are for this year, and they were very well-received. In the coming weeks, we have time with Councilman Brandon Scott, the City Council President, in addition to Councilman Z. Cohen to also share what they can expect from, from P-CAB in the coming months, and we've got some time that we're looking to schedule with the Chief of Staff very shortly. So with regard to our strategic goals, and I'm really interested in getting feedback from board members on these goals, the first strategic goal is strong advocacy that will support an increase in funding to city schools by city government for fiscal year 2021, from thirteen percent of the annual, of the general fund to a minimum of twenty percent of the general fund. We understand how important it is to make incremental increases, and we, we are also going to be making sure that we're pushing for a very clear understanding that we're in the last year of the bridge to Kerwin and that we need additional funding dollars in that space. The City Council President and I had a conversation about that this morning, in fact. The second strategic goal is around creating and leading a coalition with other organizations that support or feed into P-CAB. P-CAB understands and takes its responsibilities very seriously. We know that we are the only organization that is, that has been statutorily created to provide feedback on the policies that impact our children and our teachers and community. And then finally, strengthening our proactive community engagement. And I'll, I'll close just by saying, we've already started to exhibit this, we've attended just two community outreach events, Dr. Sanalisis had a skating event at Shake and Bake, and we went to the Mayor's Back to School Event, and just from those two events alone, we've been able to touch over four hundred families that have signed up for our mailing lists, and we are looking for your thoughts, your feedback around how we to continue to engage them meaningfully so that all of those voices become a part of your decision-making process. So I'm happy to take questions about our strategic goals or your thoughts about whether or not we need to be asking for something different.
Did you want to say something, Commissioner Reed?
Keep putting people's feet through the fire, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
I, I just wanted to say, I do appreciate your first goal about helping us advocate, and I think as a board, we've been pushing staff to figure out what is the number we need and what, what should we be asking for. So I'm hoping as we define what that is, that you can get, through your, through your work with all of the other groups that touch students throughout the city, all of us on the same page, singing from the same hymnal, right? So I appreciate that.
So, so thanks for that. One, so we've met with a fair amount of groups and we're continuing to have those conversations. Of the groups that we've met with, all of the chairs of those organizations have agreed to meet with me as a chair on a monthly basis, and those groups' executive committees have agreed to meet with us on a quarterly basis, so that we all are figuring this out together and we're saying the same thing. I, I would also offer that, that the, a minimum of twenty percent wasn't an arbitrary number. P-CAB very diligently listened to Dr. Sanalisis's presentation last academic year when we were looking at Montgomery County and, and the percentage of their budget that they allocate toward education being forty-five percent. And as someone who is a former member of the Baltimore Police Department's Consent Decree Monitoring Team, I understand that there has to be a balance between policing and education. So the number that, that, that percentage increase that we're talking about associated with the general fund is just our goal for 2021. So I don't know how long I'm going to be on P-CAB, I think I only have one more year based on my term, but, or term limits, but the, the plan is to incrementally see that shift, right? So that we're leaning more into the preventative and intervention space, which should result in less of a need for enforcement and reentry space. Thank you.
Thank you again, and, and I want to echo your words of thanks, it was really good speaking with you, talking with you last night, and, and especially hopeful in terms of, of listening to P-CAB and some very clear strategic goals that you have, and so-
Thank you.
I know that we'll work together well, thank you. We didn't have other recognized groups that signed up, and so I just want to be certain that I'm not overlooking anyone. I, I thought I saw CCAC, but I think she left, just left. Okay. So at this point, then I'm gonna, we're moving to the general public comment, we have only one person who has signed up, Ms. Kim Truheart.
Okay, um, last board meeting, I think policy BEGG was not followed, I have expressed that concern in writing, and not that I have a problem with the overwhelming message that was conveyed in public comments from the teachers, but I had something else to say. I didn't get that chance, so I'd asked that the board chair look at policy BEGG and see if I'm mistaken, or whether there was a misstep in interpretation last meeting. All right, summer engagement, Be More Live '19 was a collaborative effort of organizations across the city to engage our young people. I have to first and foremost thank the Baltimore School Police and Chief Hamm for supporting us at engagements where we had young people, to include at Liberty, down in the Inner Harbor, and at the Shake and Bake facility. The officers showed up for us and, and did an outstanding job. We managed to raise over forty thousand dollars to engage our youth this summer, and I, I'm proud to say that we haven't spent it all yet, so we're thinking about excursion to an amusement park before the end of the season is over, for as many youth as we can cram on these buses. The event at Shake and Bake was my first time really looking at the facility and being in there, and I know it's been around a while, but I stood on the top steps out front and I watched children dart across Pennsylvania Avenue. I noticed the crosswalks were as black as the tar, there were no marked crosswalks. Now, mind you, that building been there forever, okay? And I can't believe I'm the first person who noticed the crosswalks had not been striped. But that Monday, after our Saturday evening event, I just went off, I just called and emailed and texted everybody. So by Wednesday, we had some white lines painted on the crosswalk across from that location. I think I, along with that request, said I want to ensure that every school and every rec center in Baltimore has very prominently marked crosswalks. Finally, I want to say that you do have a donation to acknowledge, and that is from Royal Farms Arena. They held a benefit concert with Mary J. Blige and Nas, and a portion of the proceeds came to the Liberty Rec and Tech Center for our after-school music program, and I'm proud to say that I picked up a check from them last week for five thousand dollars. We will buy new instruments. And there's a whole lot of stuff I want to talk about, but my time is up. Trauma. I sat home Friday night at 5:00 PM and watched WJZ talk about how the police commissioner was going to increase police patrols at intersections with Squeegee Kids, and that he probably pulled SWAT officers to do that. I ain't saying anymore.
Yes. Thank you. I, I'm going to, just, just to be official, I am going to acknowledge the gift, again, from the Royal Farms Arena, five thousand dollars to Liberty Rec and Tech Center for the school, after-school music program. Thank you, and thank you to those folks. Thank you, Ms. Truheart. Okay, so we're gonna, oops, I keep pressing this button at the wrong time, we're going to move back to the consent agenda, and we have two items. Essentially, we have two votes because the one, we have no consent. So item 8.01, which is the waiver request for policy FKA, Friends of Great Kids Farm- So item 8.01, which is the waiver request for policy FKA, Friends of Great Kids Farm. Is there a motion to, okay, it's moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner All those in favor? Commissioner Lynn, Hassan, Bondimma, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks, Berkeley, and Reed. That is eight, correct, and one absent? Did I do that right? Okay. And, um, this, he, did he vote? He voted for that one. Okay, so it's nine, one absent. I'll get my math. I think I need to be on the list for after-school tutoring here. Okay. The second item is 8.02, which is policy, um, okay, I have two different things here.
Which policy number is it?
Yes, BGB waiver request. Is that it?
Is this the same thing?
Yes.
That's the same, I'm sorry, IHBJ for waiving BGB to defer IHBJ. So you just, yeah, read this.
Okay, let me make sure I say this correctly. The, the, I'm going to entertain a motion to delay the second reader for the proposed policy IHBJ until October. Per policy BGB, a second reading for, for proposed policies must, must occur no later than eight weeks after the first reader. First reader for proposed, for the proposed policy IHBJ was on July 23rd, and our next board meeting will not occur until after the eight-week mark. The reason for this delay is to address concerns that were raised by our stakeholders in the development of this policy. So is there a motion?
So I hereby move that policy BGB, I'm sorry. I hereby move that policy BGB is waived to permit the board, upon majority vote, to defer the second reading of proposed policy, policy IHBJ until no later than October 22nd board meeting.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hassan, all those in favor? Commissioner Hassan, Bondimma, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks, Berkeley, and Reed? That is eight. Okay?
You didn't vote.
Can't vote.
It's policy.
It wasn't a mine. I think it was.
Okay. Well, I haven't finished the count for the vote, so do you want to vote?
I'm.
And Commissioner Lynn? Okay. So that's nine and one absent. And so now we're doing a vote for the waiver, or that does, it's all done. Thank you. I'll, I'll get it straight. We have now two additional information items and discussion items. The first is policy GLCE telecommuting. It's a first reader.
Good evening, Dr. Santalisa's Chair, Chinia, and board members. My name is Jerome Jones. I'm the Director of Labor Relations for, in the Office of Human Capital, and I'm here to do the first reader on telecommuting policy. So the purpose of the policy is to allow employees to complete their assigned responsibilities and duties from a location other than their assigned worksite. This policy will provide flexibility to employees, and employees can benefit from continuing to fulfill their assigned duties and responsibilities. When we looked at this policy, we first looked at the state as an example. The Maryland State Department of Budget and Management uses this policy, recognizing the changing nature of its workforce, and as a way to focus on ways to increase productivity while improving the quality of employees' work, life, and morale. Also, at the federal government level, the Office of Personnel Management also uses this policy for very similar reasons. It provides flexibility while continuing to allow employees to perform their work responsibilities because a lot of their work, there are certain employees where the core work is not required to be done in the workplace, and they can perform those very same work duties from a, from an assignment other than the normal workplace. When we looked at this policy, the, what we have done is it allows eligible employees, and I should say upfront, that does not include school-based employees. So by the nature of the policy, it will exclude the majority of our employees, and by school-based, that means those who are physically, their payroll is assigned in schools. Also, there are a number of people who are assigned organizations that are at Central, but their work is in the school. So this policy does not cover those particular employees. It requires supervisor approval to work up to one day per week from an alternate work location. It also authorizes the Office of Human Capital to determine the categories of eligible employees. We outline expectations for workspace in an alternate work, work location. If you're wondering, if people are working from home or an alternate worksite, they are working as our employees, and if they get hurt under workers' compensation, we are responsible for any injuries that people may engage because they are working at our direction. So it does require us to take a look and to complete some forms on the workplace that they will be working from. It requires an employee or supervisors to have agreed upon work plan outlining what, what workers to complete it during each day of the telecommunicating, and it indicates that telecommunicating may not be used as a substitute for the use of leave time or for childcare. So if you're sick, you can't stay home and telecommute, and you have to have this done in advance. As part of this policy, there are a number of related documents. There's a formal agreement. There is a preparation and information form, alternate work locations, self-certification. There's a work schedule, the work plan, and there are FAQs. Now, what I will tell you is that our ITD department has been, has been using this, has been politing this process. For a while, they've had great success with this. What they have done is they have taken all of these forms. They have uploaded them. They're all electronic. Everything is electronic, and it is visible to the entire department, including, they have a calendar that everyone can see, that everyone that is working from an alternate worksite at any given time can go in and see who is where. They also have the work plan. What they mandate is at least two days in advance before an employee is going to work from home. They must meet with their supervisor prior to even filling out the form. They have a conversation. Employee will say what they're going to work on during the course of that day. The supervisor will say, well, what about some additional things, or I'd rather you do this or that. They agree upon that plan. The employee then writes that plan out, uploads it to the shared website where everybody in the department can see all of the work plans that are, everyone is using to work from home. As part of their team platform, they can also chat, actually be chatting if there, a problem comes up. They set it up so that they can be chatting amongst employees who are working from home just in case there is some information needed from someone at home. And so at any given time, and everything they do is uploaded. So it's not a bunch of paper. It allows, it's very, very transparent. And their goal was to make everything to do, having to do with this process, transparent so no one can say, can second guess. If you want to see what someone is doing, you can go online and, and take a look at it. And so it has worked extremely well for them. They are, they are very, very satisfied, and according to the chief, he says probably about 40% of the employees down there have actually used this and, and worked from home at some point during this policy, during implementation of this policy. And with that, I will take any questions.
Yes, that's our, Commissioner Hassan, the Commissioner Reed.
So, thank you. One question that's come up for me on this since the policy committee meeting is data privacy and technology protections. So if people are using remote systems and machines, or do they have to check out a laptop or something from city schools, have we interfaced with what sort of our risk or exposure is going to be?
So part of the policy is any equipment you knew, you need, the, the district has to provide. So, of course, employees in ITD, they have their, they have their laptops. They're always logging into our systems to do any work that they have to do, so there's protection for that. But within the body of the policy, it does say that if you need supplies, if you need equipment, you need to talk to your supervisor to make sure that you have that prior to trying to work from home.
The follow-up to that, then, is within HC, are you considering or thinking about coming up with like a one-pager of how not to leave your FERPA-eligible documents open on a coffee table at Starbucks, or pieces like, just like a, a step-by-step? So the employees are really crystal clear on what's expected around protecting kids?
So if I'm a supervisor and somebody gives me a form that says that my worksite is going to be Starbucks, my first response is, no, it's not. So we need to have someplace other than where you're having, using access to a public website? So it, it, it has to be, you know, you can't use a, a Starbucks that you're going to sit in there for eight hours and work. I mean, so there is conversation as part of this, and you do have to submit a document indicating where you will be working. One of the things that ITD shared with me, that they have employees that actually go, instead of coming in here, they will work from PDC because it's closer, it's closer to the home. So there are many different types of locations you can use, but Starbucks would not be an appropriate location to say, I'm going to work from home.
So that'd be really clearly spelled out for supervisors to provide them the support and guidance that they need?
Well, it is, it's part of the policy. There is form, alter, it is a telecommuting, alternate work locations, self-certification document that you have to fill out prior to working from home, and so the supervisor has to approve that. I can, we can go back and talk to ITD and ask them, has he experienced any requests to work from a location that they felt was problematic, and how was that handled?
I think the other piece that, at least, a question that Commissioner Hassan's initial question triggered for me was, is really around the communication and explicitness to both supervisors and employees who are taking advantage of this opportunity and what that's actually going to look like. So I think that that's, at least that's what I was hearing as a, as an overall follow-up. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, just a little clarity in the workers' compensation piece. I'm working from home.
Yes.
And I hurt myself.
Yes.
I get workers' comp?
Yes, you do.
So if I'm carrying a cup of coffee up the steps and trip?
And you trip and fall, you are, the district is liable for workers' compensation for you because you are working at the direction of city schools. Yeah. 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 Let's, let's not go off into workers' compensation.
No, not tonight.
Yeah, it actually is.
Any other questions? I will just say to the board, we're not in, we're not included in this policy. Our next item is the FY 2019 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan.
Good evening. My name's Monique Rummo. I'm the Director of Strategy and Compliance for the Operations Department. This evening, I'm going to give you a very consolidated version of the actual presentation. We did a more robust presentation for the Operations Committee, and so I'm going to fly through it for you all. All right. And so we're going to go through, quickly through our organizational structure, our budget, how we're going to raise our maintenance service levels, and then at the end of the presentation, I had included the original one so that no one missed any of the information that we provided at the Ops Committee. So the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is, it's an overview of the work that happens under Facilities Maintenance and Operations under the, the direction of Blaine Lipsky, and there are three departments, Building Maintenance, Engineering Mechanical Services, and the new department, which is Environmental Compliance and Inspections, which has absorbed the majority of the health and safety functions, as well as our custodial support services. FMNO is budgeted this year at just about $29.6 million, and this is inclusive of salaries, services, and materials as well. Now, the, the national standard says that any maintenance department should have 3% of a district's current replacement value of all the buildings in its portfolio. So on an annual basis, operate, maintenance should have $150 million to operate all of its buildings. We don't have that. And so we currently have an immediate need of major building systems that need to be replaced right now of $207 million. But I want to be clear with that amount. It doesn't mean that we haven't been maintaining our systems. It just means that these systems are currently beyond their current life expectancy and that they should be replaced immediately. And this comes from our asset inventory, which we began three years ago of just going through all of our buildings. We're in our current year, we're in our final year of this asset inventory of getting the last quarter of our buildings. And so what the district has done to support the needs that we have across the district is, starting in 2014, the board has been adding $3 million per year to the maintenance budget, and this will continue through the year 2023. And operations, our strategy with those additional funds, as well as our, our, just general budget, maintenance budget, is that we're using that to increase our preventive maintenance and our staff. But what we've done this year that we've added to that strategy, School Dude, which is our computerized maintenance management system, it's how we track and manage our work, we are now able to see our data in a way that we've not been able to look at it in the past. And so one of our strategies is how can we use this data to inform where we allocate our, our resources? How can we be more efficient? So a couple of, a few of the ways we've looked at it is, where are we performing the majority of our work? And so the data shows from the left side, where is the work being performed? In our older buildings. 65% of our work is in our older buildings. The, the data point in the middle says who is performing our work. Our in-house staff are performing 80% of our tasks. So it's general maintenance to small projects, and then we have our contractual staff, they're doing 20% of the work. That's usually large projects, more technical work, that we don't have that expertise in-house. And then the final point here is, okay, so based upon those things, where are our funds going? And so in-house takes about 30% of our maintenance fund, of our maintenance resources, and contractual is 70% of that. And according to other school districts, they're And according to other school districts, they're actually the reverse. It's more that they're doing, their resources go 70% in-house and 30% contractual. But again, our contractors are doing a lot of the technical work that we're not able to do in-house. But one of the things that we're also looking at is what work can we move from contractors' basic tasks that we can move in-house and continue to give contractors our difficult work, but take some of the smaller tasks away from them, like changing filters. Contractors, we don't need to be paying them to change filters. Let's use our in-house folks. Let's increase our staffing in order to change filters. One of the other things we did was look at where are we spending our dollars? So, we looked at our top 12 maintenance repair costs. And so, in the top five categories are the ones in red. And as you can see, our data is showing that we're spending the majority of our funds on heating, on HVAC, 44%. And so, you know, the narrative is saying, "Where's the money going?" Well, we're showing you where we're putting our maintenance resources.
Could you just say that again, one more time?
Yes.
Just say that one more time.
44% is going toward HVAC.
Is it going towards staff parties?
Not staff parties.
What's it going towards?
HVAC.
Thank you.
Pleasure. And some of the other, one of the things that I wanted to flag is that when we were looking at our data, one of the things that our teams kept saying, "We're spending a ton of money on windows." But it's not just good enough to say that. We need to show that. And so, our data showed that the majority of our maintenance repair costs in terms of window is going to our younger buildings. And folks might say, "Wow, what does that mean?" It means that our younger buildings are costing us more. They're taking 40% of our budget. And the reason for that is because of the LEED requirements. There are standards for making schools green. But we have a, there is a work group that's looking at, how can we, are there other solutions that can help us bring those costs down? Because it's associated really with our replacement costs. When there's vandalism, when folks are shooting out our windows, that's huge. And so, are there things that we can do that can limit the impact to our maintenance budget with windows, especially in those younger buildings? And then, just the last three slides, I'm not going to go through them, but they talk about how we plan to raise our maintenance service levels. What is in our control? We can't control that we don't have $150 million to operate our buildings. But we can say, "We're going to look at preventive maintenance. We're going to look at how we can improve our customer service to schools. We're going to look at maintenance service delivery to schools, and then our service efficiency." So, those are our competency areas that we're focusing on. And inside of those, we're going to look at strategy and compliance. What can we do in order to increase our service levels in those same four areas? And then, we'll look at our data. So, we'll also make data-driven decisions to move our service levels. And so, that is it. But we go into a lot more detail in the actual presentation as well as the final CMP. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. Thank you. I guess the reason I'm thanking you is, one, I guess, the attentiveness. I've never seen our commissioners pay as much attention to slides as they did today. I'm serious. At least with my eyes. I guess the other thing is the content was really good.
Thank you.
Third, you're clear. And I like the length. Keep it simple, please, but thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Washington. Thank you, your team. Thank you.
Can I echo that? Like, I mouth to Christian, "I love her." You did so good, and this is exactly what we want. So, thank you so much for hearing, you know, to all the staff, right, for hearing what the board wants and then responding in a way that looks like this. So, thank you, and Dr. Washington, thank you.
Now, let me just add for, because there are some folks out there that, you know, are saying, "Well, there's more," right? Just going to remind people that it was said earlier that the full presentation was done at the Operations Committee. Our committees are open at this time, so people can attend those meetings. And if you go on the website, on the board docs, you can also see the additional information in the report. So, even though you didn't see as much as, and we're loving it, thank you. I just want people who may want to do a little more nighttime reading to know where they can go.
And the video's online as well.
And the video is online as well, and all those good things. Thank you.
I have an echo.
Go ahead, talk to them.
I want to echo the comments of my colleagues, of my Commissioner colleagues. I liked the way you presented that because I'm obsessed with, well, not obsessed. I don't like when you put the PowerPoint up there and read from it, but you, people understand it better when you put it up there and talk from it. And I really appreciate it because we need to know what's going on in the schools. And thank you for doing that because you answered a lot of my questions that I probably would have had if you had not presented in such a way, right down to the point.
Pleasure.
Okay? Very good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you repeat your name once again?
Monique Rummo.
Monique Rummo. It's right there, okay? The Director of Strategy and Compliance. My question is, how does the bidding process impact the urgency of getting the work done within our buildings?
So, that would probably be two separate. So, what Monique presented tonight was for our maintenance team, and our maintenance team does repairs in our buildings. Generally, we use the bidding process for our capital projects, and capital projects are a major replacement project, so replacement of an HVAC system, where Monique is talking about the maintenance team, where they go and they only do repairs to the, to their system.
So, with the contractors that we're using for the work that we're talking about tonight, how long does it take for us to decide on the contractor that we're using? And how does that impact when the work, is that, am I making sense?
So, what I want to say is, we have two groups. So, with the maintenance team, most of their contractors are on-call contractors. So, we have a contract with them, and so, they're on-call. So, if there is, let's say for the contractors, if there is a project where we're doing a major repair, and that project may take a bit of time, that contractor's on-call. So, Blaine, and Blaine can come to the table. Blaine can call them at any time to come in and do that repair. It may take time because they may have to assess it, and they may have to get equipment and materials and different things like that. So, there's going to be a little bit different from our in-house team, but most of those folks are on-call. It's not like we're going through a bidding process once the issue happens.
Okay, sure. I appreciate that. It's clear for me because I don't sit on operations. So, that full presentation y'all were just talking about, I've got to go back online to watch it.
Any other que, thank you. So, now, so now, the next, the next item says Board Committee Report. So, we're going to see how well we can model after what we just experienced. And our first report is from the Operations Committee. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. So, two of you have time to practice the modeling. But Commissioner McFadden, you're on for Teaching and Learning Committee Report.
Well, we met actually last week on the first day of school, so we were very excited about that. And we received a report, a presentation about the School Effectiveness Review Process and the schools that underwent that process. So, we oftentimes have these meetings where we're looking at assessment data and how that measures student achievement. But the School Effectiveness Review looks at different things that kind of are in alignment to that, to those assessments, but well-rounded, how instruction is happening, what's going on with schools. So, that was good to see, the School Effectiveness Review. And Chief Jones and her team did a lot of that work in addition to the School Turnaround Update. So, we looked at MSD mandated CSI schools, comprehensive support schools, and the TSI schools, the targeted support schools, and those are really our turnaround schools. So, we looked at the work that is being done to really raise student achievement there. And then, Dr. Pfeiffer did an exceptional job in letting us know about the college and career readiness update. So, it was with the Fund for Educational Excellence, the report that they did, and all of that work, we're really moving in the direction to make sure that our young people really have well-rounded experience to prepare them for life. And our next meeting is on Tuesday, October 1st. We'll be reviewing park results and our master plan. Sure.
Commissioner? I just want, I just want to add something that I've always talked about, and I just want to continue to add, to remind people to pay close attention to the students who test into developmental courses. And I put a lot of emphasis on it, and I'm going to continue to do that because when these kids, and we work really hard here getting them ready for school, but when they enter to college, the problem is that some students continue to have to test into a developmental course, a math, or reading and writing. And when they go into those courses, they eat up their financial aid. And the parents really, really, please emphasize the fact that parents do not understand that they are eating up their financial aid. So, when they complete, if they don't, some of them spend three years in developmental courses, and when they finish at a two-year community college, they don't, they don't have any money left. So, it's a problem. So, I think we need to continue bringing that to our parents' attention. So, and that's one of the things we talked about. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to, unless there is something else that you would like to say, I'm going to talk about the upcoming meetings. Oh, go ahead.
This is National Arts Education Week. I do want to say that to everyone in the room. So, we definitely celebrate the arts in Baltimore. Baltimore is rich in artistic culture and history, and I think it is something to celebrate as a school system, as a city, and as a community. This is National Arts and Education Week. Just want to put that out there.
And I'm going to add to all those folks who are grandparents. I think Sunday was Grandparents' Day, and so, this is a belated Happy Grandparents' Day because many of our young people have some wonderful grandparents that are helping them to get to school every day. So, thank you.
Including our board chair.
So, our upcoming meetings, Operations Committee will meet here in the boardroom on Tuesday, September the 17th at 10:30 a.m. Policy Committee will meet on Tuesday, September the 17th at 3:30, also in the boardroom. Parent and Community Advisory Board, PCAB, meets on Tuesday, September 19th, 6:30 here in the boardroom. Our executive session for the board, next session, is on September the 24th. Our regular public, our publics meeting is at 5:00 p.m. here. And then, on Tuesday, as was stated earlier, October the 1st, is Teaching and Learning Committee at 3:30 here in the boardroom. If there's no other business, is there a motion that we adjourn? Commissioner McFadden, second, and my Commissioner Bondey, are all in favor? That's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, folks. Thank you.